All right, then let's go ahead and we'll pull this back into order and we will move into support, yeah, support services. Frank?
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, the first items, we have two items for Diane. Status on GovQA and for the review of the elected officials directors meeting agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So McKenzie put together a briefing sheet on the project timeline for the GovQA software that we purchased earlier this year. We've been having weekly meetings and McKenzie's the contact for our side and then it's the same software that the Sheriff's Office uses. So Tammy Byer is the contact on that side and we're hoping by mid to late August, we'll be fully using it and we will have staff training. I just wanted to let the board know where we're on that. And then I drafted the elected official director agenda for next, so you know, it's August 2nd. Right now it's scheduled at 2 o'clock to have a meeting. I didn't know if he had edits to that agenda.
Commissioners, first things first, do you have any questions on the GovQA?
No, I'm excited. It's a good system, so I think it's cool that we're going to use it. So good job.
Yeah, all good.
All right, then how about the agenda? Any additions or pulls?
Looks good to me.
Yeah, I think that looks like enough to get us started for sure.
All right, great job, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next is Ross with a contract for the update on the Parks and Rec Comp Plan.
Morning Commissioners, thank you Frank. I received a scope of services from Robert Droll, Bob Droll, from his company, which included the scope for reviewing the past plan, looking at all the parks that are in our system and coming up with some new goals by using some citizen input, using some Board of County Commissioner input, using some input from our Parks Advisory Board to come up with some new ideas of what people would want to see our parks doing in the next six years up to possibly 10 years and into 30 years, kind of on the long-term basis. The plan will also be put in with the capital improvement plan. We'll join right in with that. Hopefully we'll have this completed by December 31st so that it can be put in with that plan for this year. Bob seemed to believe that we would be able to finish this off. It will take a little bit of time from myself and some of our staff from Parks to help out a little bit on this, which is not a problem. But he has come up with the dollar amount of $48,500 to do this service for us. What we would like to do is, I have not, I have received the scope of services, which you have all received a copy of that. I'd first like to ask, is there's any questions about the scope of services?
Commissioners?
Or anything you see that needs to be changed?
Not for me.
Neither. Just to confirm though, that this is in line with our bidding requirements and RRP requirements and everything?
Yes, I confirm that with Frank and it is under 50 and it is a service. He did do the last one too. He was involved in the last one also. And it is a service that there's no need for the bidding.
Okay. Okay.
Alrighty, and what I would ask then after that is permission, I'll go ahead and ask for a contract from Robert Droll, so I can get a contract for the scope of services with the same dollar amount and get that to you for a regular meeting.
Thank you, Ross. And don't leave, I have a question at the end of this for you.
Okey dokey.
Go ahead. Frank, what do you got next?
Next item is the June financial statements. Jennifer?
Good morning Commissioners, thank you Frank. I'm happy to report good news to you once again through the end of June. Beginning on page two, we have our revenue for current expense for compared to last year. So through June of 2021, we've received $22,412, $22,412,100.
Say, we're in trouble.
Yeah. Compared to last year, we have received $18,885,563. So the $22 million is 57% of our budgeted, total budgeted current expense revenue. Compared to last year, it was 49%, that 18.85 million. So we're looking very good on our revenue. Any questions on the revenue before we move on?
Yeah, where's it coming? Is it something special or?
Yeah, it is.
59% on the treasure.
So a lot of that is from community development. They have an increase of $524,000 over last year. And then a lot of that is in the treasure department and the majority of that is our sales tax.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on that part? What you got next?
Departments I think are over in their revenue as well and that may be due to offices opening, possibly that sort of thing. Okay, so moving on to page three and four, the treasures detail on our property taxes, we are, we have received $6,591,783 compared to this point last year, $5,718,771, an increase of $873,000. And a lot of that's due to the levy shift that we did in lieu of the $2.16 million in diversion. But even taking that into account, we've received less diversion, about $584,000. So the property taxes still, you know, up about $300,000 in current expense. Taking that diversion into consideration and then roads property taxes also increased, which we'll go over later on. Any questions on the treasures revenue? We've received $15,433,119, $15,433,119 compared to last year, $13,181,990. And we're at 59% of our total budget this year compared to 50% last year.
There's the big bump, the rent lease and DNR Timber Trust.
Yeah, the DNR Timber Trust is a big part of it.
How much, oh, I say, never mind. Because I know we kept it low, but this is one time where that's definitely benefited.
Any other questions or comments before we move on?
Nope.
All right. Moving on to page five, the expenditures for current expense. We are at a total of $18,616,895 compared to last year, $17,645,193. So we're at 45% of our total budgeted expenditures this year compared to 46% last year. So we're right on track. Everything looks pretty good to me. The ones that are a little questionable, I think we have budget amendments for like the courthouse security is a good example.
I was gonna say though, I don't see, this is probably the closest to to right numbers as I've ever seen all the way across the board. From top to bottom, they're almost all there. There's a, you know, the motor pool one is an outlier and traffic policing, of course, but.
Yeah.
Everybody's getting used to the budget, huh?
Yeah, everybody's doing a really good job of sticking to their budget and the Sheriff's Office, that traffic policing kind of, it looks a little funny, but if you add the two together, the sheriff and the traffic policing, they're at a total of 47% of their total expenditures. So they're right where they should be as well.
I'd say it wouldn't matter anyway. That's a, that's not a, that's a specific number. There is no, you know, there's only so much of that coming in. Whether they spend it early or late, we don't care.
Yeah, if the traffic policing goes over, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
On the Superior Court, they're at 58%, but they do have a budget amendment in the works. Part of that's due to extra COVID expenses, part of that's a transfer out of juvenile into Superior due to the shift in the position that was moved. So I think that one should be okay. I'll take another look at that next month. And then I think there was a payout that still, that needs to be moved, that accidentally got paid out of Superior Court and should have been paid out of non-departmental. So we'll get that.
How big is that?
I forget off the top of my head, but I want to say it was maybe around $30,000 if I had to guess.
That's good. Thank you.
Take a closer look and hopefully that'll be fixed for next month. So any questions or comments on the expenditures?
Nope.
Moving on to page six, the specific revenue streams comparison. Everything is up over last year and the previous four years prior to that, except for of course, the road diversion because we lowered it. So the property taxes for county road, even though we did the diversion and the, or I'm sorry, the levy shift, they're still up $267,000. So that's, that's great as well. The REIT is up $310,000 over last year, REIT I and REIT II each. So that's really amazing. And then the lodging tax is up $186,000 over last year. So everybody is getting out and staying in hotels, I guess. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm a little surprised that county road is not keeping up with current as much with the percentage over.
Yeah, I need to dig into that a little bit more and see if I can get more details on why that is.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense, does it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's a reason for it, but I'll try and find out and.
Yeah, thank you.
On page seven, we have the sales tax detail by month and we are up over last year, $986,512, which is really incredible this month. So for June, we received $724,550. And last year at this time or this month for June, we had received $461,000. So the difference, $263,551 is a record increase over any one month. We're projected to get just under 7.3 million if things continue on as is. So our budget is 6.25 million. So if things continue, we'll receive about a million dollars over our budget. So that's, that's great. That'll help offset a little bit of the the interest income that we're not receiving. So questions on this, comments? Moving on to page eight, we have the six-year financial recap. We have current expense cash, $20,177,883. And again, we have, we've received 57% of our budgeted expenditure, I mean revenues. And that's higher than last year. We were at 49%, but is more in line with the previous four years, 51 to 59, 53 and 54%. On our expenditures, we're at 45% and that's exactly where we should be and falls in line with the previous five years. So moving on to page nine, we have the special and other funds cash balances at June 30th. And we are looking pretty good, I think, in all of the funds. Russell Wood has a $110,000 transfer from REIT II that still needs to go in. So their $73,000 isn't too alarming at this point. The total for the cash balances didn't print on this sheet. I apologize for that. We're at $41,339,144 compared to last year, $32,277,589 at this point in time. So we're about $9,000,000 over last year in all of our special and other funds. Any comments, questions?
Nope.
Great. Moving on to page 10, we have the motor pool. The detail by department and then the detail by type of expenditure. So through June, we've expended $659,538 in current expense and then $685,933 total, including community services and the sheriff's voting program, a grand total of $7 in that program. So anyway, we are at 51.58% of our total budget. A couple of departments, I didn't budget their fuel appropriately and that is going or went into going to, it went into June. So that should be reflected here. So I'll keep an eye on that and make sure everybody has what they need for fuel and fuel is going up. So it might be something that I need to put into a budget amendment for December. The total that we've expended on the lease portion is actually 39%. If you take the motor pool capital lease and the motor pool lease totals, we've expended $219,210. So that's, it's a little bit skewed again, looking at the budget for those compared to the expenditures. But if you add those two together, it's 39%. So that's looking good. The motor pool capital outfit portion is, I think, driving the total over the 50% benchmark, which is fine. It's not going to be a perfect 1/12 ratio every month. For the.
I wanted to have that all done earlier than later anyway. So that's, what about the repair amount though? Do we have, did we take in our older vehicles? Is that why we have these repair numbers or?
Yeah, the older vehicles are the main reason for the repairs. I can analyze that a little bit more if you want more detail on that.
Please. Because it made, you know, these others are working so well. Probably gonna want to balance and see how much we're doing for repairs compared to how much we're paying out now on some of the.
Yeah, and some of the like things that we call repairs are going to be, you know, things like tires and really maintenance type of things. It might not necessarily be what you would consider a repair to an old vehicle. So just for clarification. But yeah, I'll get more detail on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay, moving on to the last two pages, 11 and 12. 11 is the revenue for the special and other funds and we are at $33,599,425 through June compared to last year, $19,552,942. So we're at 66% of our total budget this year compared to last year, 47%. And a lot of that, it looks like is county road has received more money. I'm not sure exactly what that is in probably grants, I would guess. Community services, or I'm sorry, Community Support Services Fund 117, they have received a lot more grant revenue, 904,000 more than last year. And they have a huge budget supplement in this next budget amendment coming up of $3, 000,000 for a grant.
The Community Service Health and what's going on with the Belfer wastewater?
So Belfer? I'm not sure.
Okay.
Check on that. A big portion of that 33 million is of course the ARPA funds, Fund 155, the American Rescue Plan Act. We've received that 6.484 million. Other questions on this? And moving on to page 12, we have the expenditures for the special and other funds and we are at $24,459,706 compared to last year, $17,397,390. So we're at 41% of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to 34% last year. And the higher, I mean, it makes sense for it to be higher because of the higher revenue. Community Support Services is at 105% of their total budget. And again, they have that $3 million budget supplemental coming in. So that will help bring them back to where they should be.
Is the Belfer wastewater debt payment and then a debt reissuing?
It shouldn't be. That happened last year. So that should all be accounted for last year and not this year. But yeah, I'll take a glance at that. I checked with Loretta on the $500,000 that they are supposedly receiving from the state capital budget. And she didn't have any information at that time on the 500,000 as to which, which year it was going to be put in this year or next year. So we'll add it into December if needed.
The 3.3 billion out and three or in the 3 million out, that does, I don't know, if we can look into that.
Yeah, I'll look at that. I thought it might have something to do with, with their expansion project, of course. I mean, you know.
No, we haven't spent anything like that.
Okay. Okay, I'll get back to you on that.
Jennifer, you've made this my favorite part of our meetings. I love this part now. When we have money, it's always nice to enjoy it.
Yeah, it's great to report on when we have money. Okay, well, that's all that I have. So if you don't have any other questions, I will turn my camera off.
One real quick question. So on the expenditure side of the rescue plan 155 fund, it looks like we've spent out $351,000. Is that, is that like a first installment on the body cameras or what is the?
It is, yes. It's half of the body cameras.
And then when would you anticipate the other half hitting?
I am not sure. That would be a question for the Sheriff Department.
Okay.
Cheryl's actually on here. Cheryl, do you happen to know? Well, maybe she's just on, she's not there. Go ahead, continue please. Oh, there she is. Cheryl?
No, I'll have to check in with Chief Drakable and see if we have an ETA yet on the delivery. We just had to put a down payment on before we could start the order.
That's all good. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Jennifer on this? All right, thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Next item is the update to the personnel policy. Dawn?
Good morning Commissioners. Last couple of months, I've been working hard on updating our personnel policy. So overall, and I did send this out to all employees, elected officials, everyone received a copy of it. I took back the feedback that was put out there for me to review, worked with Frank on a few different things on it and have everything resolved with anything that came in for comment or suggestions. So the first one that I did throughout the entire policy was to comply with the latest EEOC discrimination laws, changing he, him, she, her to they, them, their throughout our policy. Then I moved into looking at anything based on the reorganization and support services, removing the support services director and where appropriate, adding county administrator or human resources administrator. That covers chapter 1.4 and 3.5 changes. Chapter 5.1, I added language for the use of Munis to track employee changes. And then 5.2, again, support services director and HR administrator change. And then we changed the date pay increases to either the first or the 16th of the month, which just helps with the auditor's office and how there, that way it's room for less errors in trying to hand compute somebody who's a midstream. Change in that it would, if their change would come on the first through the 15th, it would just apply on the first. If it's the 16th through the end of the month, it would apply on the 16th. So there's no adverse action in that change for an employee. Then we also cleaned up some language that needed to be removed, that we do not have a personnel review committee of the three people panel. So that got removed in 5.2. 5.3 added in longevity that was passed by the board in Frank's proposal a couple of weeks ago and that is effective January 1st, 2023. Chapter 5.12 adds in a policy that was requested out of the auditor's office for tracking personnel actions, which includes new hires, extra help, seasonal help and temporary positions and asking any lead that, anything that would apply to somebody's payroll and be transparent on that. So this policy, I worked with the Financial Services, Sheehan and McGregor and in the auditor's office on that. I know Patty McGuire had his input on that too. Chapter seven, I added in language for leads. And that was just pretty standard. We also outlined that in that part, we added in, there were some questions when we've negotiated for hard-to-fill positions, additional vacation days, rather than it just being that they start at the standard 12 days per year. There have been a few exempt employees who have been hired in saying that maybe they get 18 days per year. So it's kind of a negotiating tool. So we added that language in to just clarify that that is an allowable negotiation tool for new hires only. That's not saying that if somebody's worked here for 10 years and they want, their supervisor wants to reward them by moving them up and giving them more vacation days, that is still not allowable. It's only on a new hire in that language change. Chapter 7.2. Chapter seven point two seven includes language, and that's in our sick leave section. We added in language for employees to use their sick leave or Washington paid family medical leave when they're being sent home for pandemic signs, symptoms and any quarantine orders related. And I just used a generic pandemic so that it wasn't tied just to COVID. Who knows what could come around in our future. Seven point two point twenty, again, just to clean up of Support Services Director, change over to HR Administrator. Seven point three had additional language around the leave that it does not need to be exhausted prior to leave without pay. If family paid medical leave is utilized, we learned from the law that you cannot mandate them to use all of their sick or vacation leave prior to taking leave without pay here if they're using Washington paid family medically. They can keep accrued leave on our books. Then chapter seven point six, that law changed, I believe it was last year, and it increased from fifteen days to twenty-one days for people who are in active duty. And it's based on the RCW. This is one that doesn't have to be authorized, but it can be authorized up to twenty-one days if our, we've always followed the law in the past. And I know that the military active duty people do utilize this to try and keep some benefits for their family while they're out on active duty. So I brought that up to reflect the current law to the twenty-one days. We do have somebody on active duty right now who could benefit from this once this is passed to give him an additional six days throughout his time while he's out on active duty. Chapter seven point ten adds in the new Washington State Long Term Care Trust Act, which is now being called WAHERS. And that language, that is not an option for us. That is something that says we will take that money from the employee's paycheck effective one one of twenty twenty-two. I am working with several different groups because there is an opt-out language there. And I'm hoping to have that out by August, which says you can opt out. If you do opt out, you have to have your own private plan in place. You have to sign a waiver and you do not, currently the law says you do not get to opt back in. Obviously, that may be amended later. But once you opt out right now, you can't opt back in. So I'm working with Valick, Aflac, WCIF, AWC put out a big thing. So I'm trying to gather all of that information to give employees options to go and look for their own plan. Unfortunately, I can't tell employees what it would cost at each of those because it's based on your current demographic of your family. You know, your age, health, whatever. So everybody will have to kind of do their own investigation to see whether they would want to just opt in and pay that from the state or purchase their own private plan and opt out.
Hey, Dawn?
Yes.
On that one, are we going to offer any information or, because it's, it's kind of confusing unless you know what it, what it entails. So are we going to offer anything like that for our employees so that they know what's going on or how?
I'm hoping to have that out in August.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to put together what, what are they getting from the state if they opt in? How do they opt out and what does opt out mean? And then here's some options if you wish to purchase your own plan. I've kind of been letting the other agencies and I've been checking with our current optional programs that we have through Valick and Aflac and to be able to get their information to see how do they purchase a plan from them voluntarily if they wish to.
Okay, I know the chambers have, have been offering the business owners training in it, too. So if, if needed, we can reach out to them.
Okay, perfect. I'll put that down.
Thank you.
And also be a good topic for the elected and directors meeting. You know, depending on when you have your information ready, just to keep, you know, just to kind of keep it in front of everybody's mind. Because if you missed, if you missed that window,
Yeah.
you know, you missed the window. So we want to maybe make sure that we're keeping it in the forefront a little bit over the next few months.
Yep. Okay, I'll try and get Diane some information onto that for that meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. The chapter seven point eleven, I added in the new holiday federally and state passed for Juneteenth, June nineteenth, and put that effective twenty twenty-two. I also added in language. There's been several questions about when you can take holiday pay and get paid for it. And our collective bargaining agreements over the last several years have been moving forward with, to be eligible for holiday pay, you need to be in a paid status the day before and the day after. That doesn't mean you can't be on vacation or sick or anything else. But if you resign effective July fourth and you're not in a paid status on July fifth, you would not get paid for July fourth. You have to be in some sort of a paid status. Even if somebody's on Washington paid family medical leave and they're leave without pay with us right then, if they're not being paid from us, they would not get a pop back in and get, collect that July fourth holiday and then go back out on their leave without pay. There were some questions about people who are not in a paid status because they're on leave without pay. And there's, there was nothing in our policy to say they couldn't be paid for that holiday. So we cleaned that language up. And again, I worked with Tim Whitehead on that part of it. I did take and we are rescinding Resolution twenty dash twenty twenty-nine in Mason County Code two point one five three as the Mason County Telework Program Policy and Procedures. And that was kind of thrown together last year in the midst of all the pandemic and trying to get something out there with some kind of guidance. And I scaled that back to what really has worked and what was not needed from the experience that we've had this last year in teleworking. So I put that right into the personnel policy so it's easier to understand and track. I've got the forms that are mentioned in the new telework policy all designed and ran those through Frank and everybody else, the elected officials, too, and got feedback on those and cleaned that up, too, as appropriate. Is there any other questions?
Are we good with moving this forward, guys?
Yep.
I am.
Great job, Dawn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have two quick items to add to that. One is I have circulating an RFP draft for a state lobbyist. If I can get revisions back, I can bring it back as a final draft next Monday and present to the Commission for Review and Acceptance. We also have two parcels that are being asked to be reviewed by the county for sale. So I'll have that for the Commissioners in an executive session on next Monday. And just to let the Commissioners know, the Bank of America Building is still available. I hope to be able to take a tour of that with Kelly and report back to the Board what the prospects are for that building as well. That's all we have. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for them?
Commissioners, can I interrupt you really quickly? I followed up with Lisa Frazier on Belfer Sewer Fund four thirteen on the question on the financials, and it was the bond refunding. You were right, Commissioner Netherton. So I apologize for not knowing that. And I wanted to ask if I can slip this into the budget amendment for tomorrow? If that's okay, the, the resolution to set the hearing, the three point one six million for this.
Yeah, as long as it's to go out for that, once we've already started that process, we can add it, so.
Yeah, it would.
I see you getting ready to speak. What you got?
Yeah, so I'm okay with that. Jennifer, I also had a conversation with Peter Jones last week that they might have some expenditure side revisions on the state grants that they receive for the Blake to help with the effects of the Blake decision. Has he contacted you at all?
No, not about that.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind checking in with him, Commissioners, we already accepted the revenue
Yeah.
part of it. But he has some questions about being able to have the expenditure authority.
Yep.
So if we can, if that's the case, if we can try to squeeze that in for tomorrow's announcement as well, that might save everybody in the long run.
Yeah, if you could please put it in, we could always choose not to, to do it during the process. But if we don't have it in for what goes out to the press, we can't do it. So we find a way just to get it included in there, even if we don't use it.
Sure, I'll check with him. Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Other questions? I have two. Ross, do we have, I got that email from that person on the Tahuya lake. That's in Kitsap County. That's not here, right?
That is correct, but it does affect us by the Tahuya River coming into our,
Yeah.
but it, it has absolutely nothing that we can really push far due with. She has reached out to Kitsap and has run into block walls and she just keeps me in the loop is what she's trying to do.
This last one was not keeping you in the loop. It was throwing you under the bus. Can you look into that and just see if there is something that we can do? Is, is it valid, her concern about the four feet limit and the effect it has on our properties down below that?
Well, they have got state ecology. They've had state dam and all them come in and look at it, too. And they're, they're saying it was kind of a fluke thing that did happen, but it, it is something that will affect us.
Okay.
But we do not have a lot of control over it, but I will be, I will get with, get with the people from the state for the dam safety. He is in our plan. It is in their plan for them to call us.
I see that Commissioner Trask and Frank Pinter caught the dam safety.
Oh, well. Well, that's what it's called, actually.
Okay, so yeah, please look into that and keep me in the loop if you don't mind, since it is one of our constituents. Is it one of our constituents? Because if she actually lives on the lake, it's not going to be.
No, she lives on the lake and she used, there's a little more history to it than I can let you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Diane, this other one that we just received, can we actually control those waterways as such an open waterway between Stretch Island and Treasure? Do we actually have a say in something?
That's why I've never seen any kind of restriction tried to put on marine water. I mean, it'd be up to the Sheriff's Office to enforce it.
Yeah.
But I've never seen a request to even try to restrict it because I can't imagine, I think it'd be very difficult.
Well, I think, Commissioners, what we have is we had somebody that is requesting to put together a petition, asking for how to do that so that they can restrict the access between Stretch Island and Treasure Island. And we do have a process actually to do it, but I'm just not sure that we have the authority to do it. So Diane, if you don't mind, go ahead and send them our process, but could we find somebody that will help us to decide if we even have authority there? If we don't, what are we going to do?
That's whenever we get a petition through the voting ordinance, it goes to the Sheriff's Office for input. Because like I said, they're, they're the enforcing agency behind the voting ordinance. So if they say it'd be near impossible, then it'd be up to the Board. It'd go through a public hearing process and all that.
I appreciate that. I'm wondering whether we even have authority on such a, a waterway like that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I guess out of some it's Tim Whitehead when, if and when we receive, because we need to know exactly what are they asking. So I'd send it to legal and then to sheriff.
Please, and you asked if you can read, if you should reach out to them, please do share them our code and everything.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, guys?
Yeah, Commissioners, just maybe Frank has some information. Just where are we at with, with collating the ARPA priorities?
That's coming back on briefing next Monday.
Okay.
All right, anything else? And I thank you very much. We're going to jump right into Community Services. We're running a little bit late, guys, so we'll just kind of blow through them if we can. Dave, what you got?
Okay, blowing through. Good morning, Commissioners. Happy bright sunny Monday. It's gorgeous out there. Okay, we're going to start off with Lydia. We're talking about housing.
Trying to get my camera up. It doesn't want to come up for some reason. There it is. Good morning. We have a request going forth to do a housing market study. It's been called also Housing Needs Assessment, but it's actually called the Market Study. The nine percent tax, the low-income housing tax credit program that we're looking at, putting an application in for Mason County to begin to work on some of this housing, low-income housing issues that we have and try to begin to do some projects. So the first step is that we have to do this market study. So we'll have to go out for like an RFQ, find some agencies that do this type of work and get in an exact bid. We're saying up to fifty thousand, but that's probably pretty high. We did check with Kitsap County, who had one done two years ago or a year and a half ago, and they were, I think, twenty-five thousand dollars. So we're just not sure all the ins and outs of it until we actually get into it and make sure that we have enough funding to cover it. It would be coming from the fourteen oh six fund, which has a current balance of eighteen, one hundred and eighty-two thousand as we're looking to take it from.
Commissioners, are you comfortable with putting this forward?
I am. And just for a little bit additional context, Commissioners, this was something that was recommended by the Housing Behavior Health Advisory Board. I think it would be really informative. I know Sharon, you've been working on some housing issues. The city has been working on some housing issues. And this just, I think, would be an opportunity for it to be a little bit more of a comprehensive needs assessment for the whole community. And, you know, the, the thought has been for a long time to use some of the money in TST's fund balance towards some capital. We've done that in the past with Homes First. And so this is just kind of, you know, re-scrubbing some of those ideas and starting to put a little bit more context around where the community is at in terms of housing needs more broadly.
And I still agree, if we can find the right type of projects, capital improvement, capital investment is a much better way to go, but.
This might also help with, with the Housing Authority as well.
Yeah.
Getting them some information that they might benefit from.
Yeah, and they may be the energy we try to work through if we get them to sell some of their properties and create new things. What do you got, Sharon? Any, any opinion? Why is it, your, your screen is really blurry for some reason.
Using filters?
It just, it just focused.
No, it's, it's the window behind me. Makes it go odd, but I like the light, the natural light. I think it's a great idea. I think it's, it's a positive move and, and I look forward to, to see what they come up with. I think it's, it's very cool. It would be helpful if we can start helping more people.
All right, Lydia, you got your marching orders. Thank you very much. You got anything else for us?
That's all I have. Thank you, Sirs.
Yeah, Dave?
Ma'am.
Along those lines, I'm attending a seminar tomorrow on increasing housing supplies put on by Insight Formation and improve pop health. So looking at tying kind of those two things together, so. Next thing is Kel Rowan.
Good morning.
Morning, Kel.
I have two things. The first one is we had another application for the Planning Advisory Commission, Terry Arcieri. Not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, so I apologize upfront for any mispronunciation. This would be an at-large position. So we now have filled two for each district, one, two and three, and this is the seventh position at large. And so this is a request that the Board interview the applicant and then either appoint or not appoint to the Planning Commission.
Cool.
Yep, we're there.
Awesome. And that that that'll be the first time we have a full tack in quite some time, so that's exciting. Uh, the second item I have, I briefed last Monday as well, but this now you have in front of you the um, uh, for the Belfair Planned Action EIS, the additional scoping tasks and the budget. So I, we have provided um, the 2021 Budget Change Request to Jennifer Byerly. Um, and then this scope of work um, adds some additional stuff, additional information in the Transportation Section and Utility Section of the Planned Action. Uh, and we are extending the grant, or not, sorry, we're extending the contract to the end of this year, so December 31st, 2021. Although we are hoping to complete uh, the Planned Action prior to that date. But uh, open to questions.
Anything, Commissioners?
No, appreciate the update.
Nothing for me.
Same here.
Okay, and that'll be on the action agenda for tomorrow.
Thank you, Kell.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
Okay, next is Casey with the Amendment 22.
Good morning, Casey.
Hello, um, this is a consolidated contract amendment. And the uh, it boils down to $28,250 in additional funding to ongoing programs. 500 is to immunization and child profile, 1,750 is to recreational shellfish, and then 26,000 is for the Group A drinking water uh, sanitary surveys that we do every year. Uh, there is a little bit of other language. It changes some of the COVID uh, report dates and then it extended the funding period for some more funding through the end of the year versus ending June 30th. And so I'd like to put that through on the two weeks from now to the consent agenda to get that approved and sent back.
I'm supportive, Commissioners.
Yep, same here.
Good.
We'll make that happen, Casey. Thank you. Dave?
Okay, uh, last couple of things are some things came up on Friday and I'll go through them pretty quickly, so. Um, on the RIA 1415 contract work, wrapped that up at the end of last week. So that has been submitted for final payment to Ecology. Yeah, um, so that work, uh, the contract is done, but we're gonna still be working on the process to get those two things through the Ecology process. And I'll be working with the Ecology, typically with Angela and Stacy as as we roll into RIA 15, and that's coming up next couple of weeks. Uh, on the public health side, we are seeing an uptick both in the state and in the county. That's we're just gonna be watching it pretty closely. And then coming back to funding, we do have funding, a vote on funding uh, with DOH and with SALFO. And that will be on the 5th of August. It goes through a concurrence process, which should be finished by the end of August, so we should have an idea of what funding is going to look like through the fall of this year and then into the next county fiscal year. And the second half of this, first half of this fiscal year for the state, so those numbers are gonna change for us. We'll be watching those to incorporate that into our budget. And then the last thing is I'm gonna run up to uh, DM and pull the drought response plan and go through that and and see where we're at with drought response as far as our mini water system go.
Hey, does uh, do we have anything for uh, this department? Any questions or comments?
Dave, can you um, thank Audrey for her quick response on uh, what was it, Thursday for our Turning Point meeting?
Yeah, we'll do, yep, yep.
It was awesome.
And we'll thank Kell also for her quick response on those emails this morning. Uh, anything further?
I think that's it, Commissioner.
Okay, then we will take a break until uh, 10:19, please. We'll go ahead and come back into session and we are meeting now with Public Works, Loretta Swanson.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning, Loretta.
We have one big whopping item for you this morning. And we're asking to put on brief, or excuse me, actions executing a franchise agreement. Um, this is an actually a renewal of an existing franchise with the Clifton Pebble Beach Water District. And this is located up on North Shore Road.
I have no issues. Does anybody have any issue with it?
Looks good.
All good with me?
Yep.
All right, thank you Commissioners. Um, a follow-up item, Commissioner Netherland, I've um, shot an email to DOT about the um, the concern from motorcycles on SR 302.
Yeah.
So when I hear back on that, I'll follow up with you on that.
Well, I heard back they had a big rally that went through that. And I got a lot of phone calls on that one.
Okay.
They did that this weekend.
Okay.
I also drove through there, and that is on our side of the road, so our side of the tracks uh, in Mason County.
Are we, well, maybe I'm misunderstanding where we're talking. County side, but near Victor, right?
I just wasn't sure how close it was, but it's definitely far on our side.
Okay, all right.
Right, uh, you have anything else for us?
I have a pretty short agenda today. Yes, that's it.
Commissioners, do you have anything for Loretta?
Nothing.
Okay, so Loretta, I just sent you a text message, afforded it to you.
Okay.
If you could take a look at it and get back to me in a little bit, uh, if there's something we can do to help those folks, uh, uh, I didn't want to mention the name that she was saying, but I'm surprised because we have great staff, so if uh, it's not how it's portrayed, I'd like to get back to this person and explain to them they can't talk like that. Let's just kidding. I guess our staff is wonderful. It always breaks my heart when people just ad lib their own their own emotion to our employees that are working hard to actually get the job done and help them. Uh, it's always possible that they could screw up, but more likely than not, it's something different.
All right, yep, definitely. I will follow up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, uh, Cheryl, there she is. Uh, next up, we're gonna go right into the sheriff's office. Cheryl?
Okay, we're gonna have the sheriff present first.
Okay.
So Commissioner, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I believe you've already, uh, is up for consideration and been cleared by the prosecutor's office uh, for briefing today, the MOU with the Squawson Tribe. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yep.
So what I'm really here to do on that, as as far as briefing, is I think you're all aware of it and it's worked through the prosecutor's office. First, I want to recognize Under Sheriff Adams and uh, Mr. Kevin Lyon from the tribe. Uh, this is a document that is 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 very historic, actually. It's probably the most historic document that you might read for some time in the whole country that people don't know exists for the most part. Um, what this is, is is an agreement between the tribe and the county where we work together on law enforcement services. This started in 2007, uh, having to do with the tribe was not on on the same radio frequency as the rest of us. And when Mike Evans was the chief out there, he's now our director of communications. Mike approached me about that and it was said that it could not be changed, and we changed it. And the tribe uh, moved on with this to our radio frequency. Um, there was a a lot of different things that happened during that time. And as a result of that, and starting to work with the tribe on issues, um, we formed the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Breakfast, and we had so many people, the tribe at that time moving forward, asked us if we would like to have that on on the tribal property out there, which has been in place for 15 years. Uh, moving forward, uh, the tribe during this time over the years has decided that they would send their officers not only to the Federal Academy, but they would start sending their officers to the Washington State Law Enforcement Academy, so they'd be certified in the state of Washington. At that time, we were one of the first sheriff's offices in the country or known in the country to cross commission their officers because they both completed the State Academy and the Federal Academy. Um, at that time, Chief Evans and I spoke at the National Conference in Green Bay, Wisconsin, about the relationships between the tribes. Uh, moving forward with that, um, the tribe then began to do, uh, share the radio with us. We started doing mutual training. Tribal members on our SWAT team, tribal members on special enforcement groups, uh, crimes on our task force against uh, crimes against children, our search and rescue team, dive team, and marine patrol. Again, unique to only our offices in in the state of Washington between Mason and Squawson Island. Um, at this time, what they had proposed is there's a lot of challenges, and I won't talk about all the legal things, but it has to do with, um, now that we're cross-commissioned back and forth, there's a lot of arrests that we have to be careful with and know what we're doing because it could be a tribal member that's not on tribal land, and it's 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 on state land or property can make a difference in arrest. There can be a non-tribal member on tribal property where we have to make a judgment call, make an arrest. And tribes are technically sovereign nations. So this agreement to continue to work together, basically, you'll see on one of the last pages that went through the prosecutor's office, is set up that so if we have a condition or circumstance where we've made an arrest, the agreement has been added to this after 10 years of agreement was that it would come down to having both prosecutors, the prosecuting attorney from our county and the tribal uh, legal authority, decide if it's gonna be charged uh, on on most things, decide if they're gonna charge in state court on tribal court how they're gonna deal with it. Um, it took quite a bit of negotiating back and forth. Under Sheriff Adams and Mr. Lyon worked very hard on this uh, to bring this document up to date. And if you'll notice, um, it's been over 10 years, they said over a decade, that we have worked successfully together in 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 uh, in our current situation like no other, that this one was agreed that this would be signed for another 10 years. So uh, what a positive thing that's been all over the whole country, that Mason County and both tribes, both the Squawson Island and the Skokomish Tribe. And even now, we have people retiring from our office and going to work for the tribes. Uh, one of them happens to be the chief of the Skokomish Tribe, and one of the sergeants at Squawson is a retired Mason County Sheriff's Deputy. So the relationship is very tight. I just want to lend support as you read through this to what's been done and note that it's been vetted through the prosecutor and the tribal attorney. So uh, that's my two cents worth. I just wanted to know the history because it is unique uh, across the country that we do this.
That's cool.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, Sheriff. So this all passes muster um, and and still allows you all to retain your authorities and meet your responsibilities as well as in the prosecutor's office?
Yeah, absolutely. And we we had the had it reviewed by the prosecutor's office and they spoke with the tribe. Uh, mainly is is just updating uh, what we already uh, have had for 10 years. And you'll see on the on the last page, it's a single page, I believe, there might be a signature page after that. And it makes a brief description of, it's it's basically bringing together the the legal authorities, uh, the prosecutor uh, out of the tribe and prosecutor from the county to take a look at mutual cases that will ship. And and the legal authorities will make the judgment whose court it's tried. It's really above, technically, that part is above uh, the law enforcement officer on the street. We just want to make sure that we're both showing a good faith effort that if they're assisting us or we're assisting them, that the the charges being filed, if they're gonna be filed, uh, that those go through a mutual process with the prosecutor and the tribal attorney, and they both agreed to that. So it's on the very, uh, it'll be page one of the addendum. It it says MCSO jointly refers criminal matters to the parties uh, prosecutors and thereafter, the tribe's prosecutor confers with the county prosecutor as to which jurisdiction best sued to prosecute. And that's an agreement between the prosecutor's office and the tribal attorneys. It's on uh, section B under recitals on the on the first page.
Got it, great. Thank you.
Okay, so we're okay to move forward with this?
I'm supportive.
All right, Sheriff, you got it?
Thank you. I I want to add note, we were just at uh, met with the tribal attorney, I had to run into him in town this morning, excuse me, the tribal administrator. Um, and and again, I can't overemphasize the significance of this, that we were sent to Wisconsin to speak as it all over the country about the relationship of our agencies a few years ago. And uh, uh, to the tribe, this is a big thing too, so we'll be attending their signing uh, with tribal council sometime in the next couple of weeks, the tribal administrator. So thank you so much for that. And again, thanks Travis Adams and Kevin Lyon for their work on putting this together.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay.
Cheryl?
The only other thing we have, um, the sheriff's office looks at the fees that are charged before budget season every year. This year, we'd like to bring forward to tie our mileage to GSA, to the uh, federal mileage rates so that we don't have to keep coming back every year to get those changed. And then secondarily, it's not, it's not really a fee. What we'd like to do is put in, put wording in to the fee schedule that we don't have to do refunds for less than $5, since they're more expensive to process than they're than that.
Are we? Have you checked that with our attorney just to make sure? I have no problem with it. It makes perfect sense to me, but quite often the law doesn't make sense.
No, we haven't, but we can certainly do that.
Yeah, let's please do that, just to make sure we're not stepping over something, because we may have to refund them.
Okay.
Other than that, Commissioners, what do you think?
Uh, yeah, no, I'm I'm supportive with with that um, with that caveat, we're checking with uh, prosecutor's office.
So Cheryl, by tying it with the, to the the GSA, will that just be automatic? And anytime that they have an increase, it will just automatically roll over to to us?
Yes.
Okay.
And is that, I mean, I think is Frank still on here?
Frank, are you available? There he is.
Yes.
So just, you know, with this change for the rest of the county, what do we do for mileage? And then is this something that we should maybe be considering just doing countywide so that there's not you know, a difference between one department and all the others?
I can take a look at that and talk with Cheryl about that and the and the prosecutor's office.
Okay, yeah, it just might be a, it just might be a good thing to, you know, update countywide versus, you know, here, if it works there, it should work everywhere, right? So.
Exactly. I agree. If if we're gonna do this, if there's an issue on it, I'd like to know sooner rather than later, but if we're gonna do it, I'd rather do it across the whole county.
Yeah. Will do.
Okay, thank you. That's all we have.
All right, Cheryl, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next up, I don't see her, Economic Development Council. She was on all morning.
And I I did email Jennifer. I called over and no one answered, but I did email and asked her if she could jump back on, and I haven't heard from her.
11:32, we're ways off. Uh, let's take a 15-minute break, guys.
Okay.
All right, see everybody at 47. And bring this back into session, and we are moving on to Economic Development Council with Jennifer Baria. Welcome, Jennifer.
Guys. I'm pulling up my notes. I did, um, send you the update to the grant program, so that what I have on my list to talk with you guys about is um, give you an update on um, the grant program that that can potentially be funded through ARPA. Additional funding opportunities that that you're considering. Um, and I'd like to talk with you. Uh, Diane, um, had mentioned that you guys wanted to talk about the SEDS project list, and in conjunction with that, I wanted to kind of pick your brains and and talk with you a little bit about upcoming work that I see on utilities capacity building, if that works for you guys. Uh, or if there's anything else that you want me to add to that, I'm happy to do that as well. All right, so um, I sent you over, as I was thinking about the grant program, I thought, you know what? I don't think we'd sent you anything updated since Karen initially sent that grant program. It must have been probably two or three months ago. So this is just to, um, I guess officially submit to you guys the grant potential program. Um, we're looking at close to 500,000 is what we've put in there. That's definitely negotiable. It's not a hard and fast number. But we're we're making it an all-encompassing small business with home-based businesses that haven't received prior funding, um, will be prioritized. And I did include in conversations that I had with you guys, um, some language around what that nonprofit support could potentially be. Uh, I've allocated up to 10% of the grant can go to a nonprofit that is not or has not received funding um, through you guys already or isn't contractually obligated to provide something with you guys. Received funding through you guys already or isn't contractually obligated to provide something with you guys already. So this is really kind of focusing in on those nonprofits that haven't been able to access any of the the previous funding. Anything, and and I honestly don't know what kind of requests we will get from those nonprofits. Which is why I put the language in there up too, so any additional funding that isn't used toward a nonprofit will just. Loop back into the the bigger grant fund and will go to those businesses that have have applied for it, so. We're we're potentially reserving some funding, but it's not a hundred percent will. Will or must go to. Kind of a situation, so that's. That's where we have, it's set up a lot like we did the previous grant. We'll have a matrix that our review panel will score. We'll do the breakdown between the the districts so that. You guys will be reviewing the businesses and prioritizing the businesses within your districts. And we'll go through funding that way, if there's. Any issues or if we need to do any changes, just let me know, we're happy to adapt.
Jennifer, do you think that five hundred thousand will be enough?
I think that there's a lot, it's tough to, it's tough to say yes or no to that. Because there's so many different funding sources right now, there's childcare that's going through DSHS, there's. There's already the utility support or the rental assistance that's happening. So I think it's, I think it's definitely a good first start. I'm I'm approaching it a little bit, kind of like they're they're dividing up the ARPA funds half now and if we need it. Knowing that there's a potential for some additional funding as we get a better handle on what those businesses might need, so. We definitely have businesses and will definitely utilize that full five hundred thousand, but. Next steps, we're fully reopened now, we've got a lot of businesses that are really re-engaging, that are honestly looking at. At their needs, we had another grant program that was run through the state. That even though they were awarded funding, they were like, well, we don't need it now. No, no, ta- take the funding, take the award and really look at it, so it's it's working with those businesses to make sure that they. That they're using that for for some future growth opportunities. So, yes, for now, and maybe potentially might need some more, but if we. But that that's determined on whether or not there's another shutdown or if there's. Another kind of shuttering that we have to do or a limiting in in behavior. That that will change that answer pretty quickly, but as it stands right now, our businesses. Are open, they're moving forward, they're engaged, so this is really just to kick, keep kickstarting that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? On that? All right, so I wanted to, kind of in conjunction with that, and I've I've talked with each one of you Commissioners. About, it's it's shocking that you're going to hear this from me, but how ARPA funding. I'm I'm really focused in in helping utilize those funds toward that that infrastructure development for that potential future. Job growth that we have. We are working with a developer now and we we've gone around and around this, we see it in Belfair where we have. This immense growth opportunity, but we're but we're missing on some of those key things that we need. There's funding requests for a water connection up in Belfair that that will help with that capacity. The substation is needed in Belfair, they have very limited capacity in what can go into their electrical grid. And that limits what those businesses can. Or even look at developing, we've got the land, that's great, but if. Businesses need power, I haven't found one that doesn't need power, even a small amount. But but really looking at what those utility infrastructures are that are needed. We're running into that even down here in the Shelton side of it. We have a developer that is looking at the Wallace Neeland area for development and as it sits right now. They'll be able to develop, but the next person won't, so the development that could come from. That that interest in that development project moving forward is going to be stymied. With the same with the same issues. The power on that that substation is limited as well and needs to be upgraded. There needs to be a connection. Or a discussion on that connection for the the sewer system, Basin Nine has a limited capacity, so the city is definitely looking at what that capacity. Is needed for growth and potentially connecting it, the closest connection that it can do is in front of the high school to where the port is, so it would go up Shelton Springs Road. But that project you're looking at is probably a three million dollar connection project. And and if you're, and if we're not starting those conversations. Now, we're we're going to miss out on some of these opportunities as those developments move forward. And being able to kind of compound those developments, using this development to help with the next development and the next development after that, so. In these conversations that I'm having with developers, it really is impressing upon me the need to pull those together, so that is work that the EDC will be doing over the next. Probably years, but we'll be starting it over the next. One, maybe two months and starting to pull together those different partners to meet with each other. To really discuss how we can build those out, because. You and I all know infrastructure is needed, but it is not cheap, it is, it is pricey and it. And and it is kind of long term, it takes some time, a substation you can't just put in very quickly, it's a three-year at a minimum process, so. Having those conversations now and moving forward, so it's kind of a heads up. Get ready for the EDC to pull together partnership meetings and to really to kind of have those discussions. Between yourselves and. And and as to what it is that you guys would need to to be able to build those partnerships. The city and the county down here in the south end are a big one, the county and all of the other public entities up in the north end. We are happy to to start those conversations, they're going to be long and they're going to be. Pretty detailed, but we definitely need to to start moving forward on it, so. Just kind of wanted to start that and and really help. Help you kind of refocus on what that ARPA funding can really be utilized for. I know that there's a lot of projects out there, there really is, and there's a lot of projects that you guys have internally that need to be done. But I I'd love to help kind of form that that discussion, help really bring bring focus to those. Those projects that are needed for development. That that is kind of my viewpoint though, so so I understand that that there's other projects that are needed, but. Happy to help lend my support to the infrastructure projects. Broadband out Hootsport would be excellent, being able to. To help a public-private partnership move forward with development of that utility. Or almost utility, since there it's not quite clarified as a utility yet, so. I know part of that comes down to the SEDS process and Diane asked me to talk about the the SEDS list. And I know that you guys had that discussion already, so I'm I'm going to kick it back to you a little bit and and ask what the discussion was. And if you guys have approved the SEDS list, or is it just a matter of talking about the projects on it that are. Ready to go essentially?
Yeah, for the most part, you know, prioritization, we didn't prioritize on the SEDS, but we did. Put together the ones that were ready to go and put them up front. So that'd be nice to to know for the commission if they don't already know that. I myself am a strong proponent for the substations, knowing that that's going to be a brick wall we're about to run into. But we're going to need to have that partnership that you're talking about, so they can go after some grant funding and stuff themselves to utilize. The monies that we have as a match or something. We can have more of an influence on which ones to start with first by doing that also. Where we think in the county it's going to be needed the most for future development. I look forward to that.
You know, Jennifer, I asked you for a a priority list and thank you so much for sending that email, I said, I shared that with Frank, so. Maybe Frank could share that with the other Commissioners as well. But appreciate that so much because you have you have a little bit more understanding. About who's coming in and who who would like to help Mason County grow and. And so I appreciate your insight in that and having the the conversations that we've had, so thank you.
Anytime, I think, and I think that's been what's been. The most impactful to me and it's been interesting to talk with these developers. They are not developers that are interested in doing downtown Skyrise development, the. The conversations that I have with them are, they want to come into a community where they can have a big impact, they want to become part of the community, they want to be. An integral part of that discussion and that and that growth. So having that kind of partnership is definitely. Helping us craft that conversation to say, all right, well then, we need to, we need to keep moving forward with our own personal partnerships so that. So that that can kind of compound and move forward.
Commissioner Shute?
No, you know, I I agree, I mean, I, you know, I've. I've been saying we need to get these, you know, projects funded and and get this stuff out the door, so I'm I'm more interested in listening to the conversation today to hear from. You all what your priorities are and I guess, you know, next Monday we'll have another chance to to look at that and and compare. You know, where we think the first round of money should be should be going, so yeah, no, I'm I'm excited to hear that we're we're finally starting to tease some of these things out.
Oh, have you guys, have you guys already had the conversation together on what your your projects are that you'd like to see move forward with, or? Can I get a sense of where everybody? Is a little bit?
That's next week.
That's next week, okay. Well, I'm happy to provide any clarification on any projects that are on the SEDS list. Like Randy said, it isn't, it isn't numbered prioritized, but we did put it together. As a list of what amount of funding is needed to move forward, it's sort of prioritized by the remainder of the funding that's needed, so. Small to large. Kind of how that moves forward, I can, I can absolutely reorder it and and talk readiness, if that's something that you guys would like to see. Maybe not necessarily reorder the list, but I can send you guys a copy of what those projects look like. Ready to move, a little bit like the list I sent to Sharon. That just talks about the projects, how how many of them can quickly get up and moving? Because when we talk substation, and this is probably a conversation that that you'll have with PewDie3 as you move forward, potentially funding that. You're not, you're you're going to be helping fund phases of that, it. I think the funding needs to be allocated before that whole project will be finished, right? I think you've got to spend it four to five years, is that right?
It has to, the project has to end by or be completed by twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so I think I think that there's definitely going to be conversations on what part of the project can be funded, and I think Randy is absolutely right in that. That partnership and making sure that that those that those entities are still going after additional funding, which. In the conversations that I've had with the different ones, they really are, they're building those partnerships, they're building the. The capital request, they're building wherever they can get funding from, because they're understanding the need that we have as well.
That's awesome.
Other questions for Jennifer?
Yeah, Jennifer, so Frank forwarded me the and and Christian and everyone here the thread. Between you and Commissioner Trask and looks like the obviously a high priority for. The EDC is the sewer extension from the high school to Basin Nine. What what are the conversations like with the city in terms of? What they might be thinking with their ARPA allocation putting towards that project itself, where does that rank in terms of their priorities? Given that we're thinking about how we can use. Our allocation as as, you know, supercharging a a match component.
Um, and that's that's probably the first conversation, one of the first conversations of partnerships that I will bring forward, I talked with. Their manager and have talked with a few of their council persons. And that that partnership is there, they're not expecting anything to be fully funded from the county, they're definitely. Open and willing to talk about adding some of their ARPA funds to it as well and working with the developer, I know that. There's a potential to have as those developments move forward. Having the developer do the construction because it's cheaper, we don't have to do prevailing wage and having that conversation. Of of what that partnership looks like, whether or not it's credits or whether or not it's it's other methods of of bringing that partnership together, so. That, yes, they're definitely interested in in moving that conversation forward, I would say that. That their ultimate goal would be probably the the bigger buildout of Basin Nine so that the capacity isn't always coming down to. Their their station down here in downtown, but that's that's their long-term, probably decades goal, not not. This immediate one that needs to be accomplished.
Jennifer, I want to clarify though, I just saw this, this is your your personal.
Yes.
This is not the EDC's.
No, she. She asked, she just asked for my thoughts on the projects that had been submitted to you guys from an EDC standpoint. On where we would see those allocations. Going, so.
Not the EDC though, because we didn't, we purposely did not do that.
Right, this is, and these aren't all SEDS SEDS list items, these aren't all. Infrastructure projects. And and like I said at the beginning, I'm looking at it through a lens of what development impacts could be.
And this was the list that I shared the briefing document with Jennifer that Frank had, so I just asked her for her input on that, just to clarify.
Like I said, I just wanted to clarify, it was a personal one, not a, not the organization. I'm good with it, I just, that need to be clear. Other questions? Crickets?
Well, then hopefully that means I answered all of your questions. I will, I will say that I am working with the port. I I bring this up only because I just received another RFP for a building. It looks like a really great manufacturer that could potentially site there, but they're looking for a building that's twenty to thirty thousand square feet, which is. A manufacturer that fits into the size of what we'd be able to. To easily have a building ready for, so the port is definitely moving forward with the replacement of their. We'll call it fire, fire sale building that they had that burnt to the ground. They are still moving forward with their development of another project and they are. Seriously considering looking at additional buildings, so. Hopefully, and as we move forward, I know that there's a few buildings up in the north end that will be going into the submission as well. But working with those public entities that have the land and have the capacity to build those buildings is going to really help us be able to. To recruit some of these. Manufacturers that are looking for existing facilities, so it's very good news that the port's deciding to move forward. With building the additional building, I know it's going to be a lot of extra work for them, but that additional building in addition to the one that they lost to the fire. So, yay to the port. We're very happy they're moving forward with additional buildings and I know that. The size that they're looking at is a potential consolidation for. Businesses that are already utilizing multiple buildings. So it might just be a rework expansion for our current business, but that will open up buildings that those businesses are already in, so. I think this is a really good move for them. And that's kind of it in a nutshell, we've been busy, it's been, it's been a little bit hectic.
And as you, we talked about earlier, there's some. Possibilities of some movement of some properties and some projects that come along with that, that could be a very high impact to our community. And with that, some of these things may be needed to help facilitate. Speedwise. Then also, Jennifer, have you been talking at all with? The folks looking at bringing in? A welcome center and, yeah.
Um, we we've heard the dis- Um, we, we've heard the discussion and, and what that looks like. I know that, um, they've talked about a couple of different sites. And, um, I think the focus right now is to try and get it more at the beginning. Um, there is some potential on having it be at the, at the corner county property, I think would be great. We've got a lot of tourism that hits that point and moves forward. So, um, I've, I've had discussions and had, and heard the conversations that have been going on, but I, I like the idea of a welcome center.
Yeah, you should.
I've been on, on many a road trip where I've needed to stop at one.
You know, when I was a port commissioner, I was shocked with the economic development aspect of putting in restrooms. It truly was a huge economic development, uh, tool, as people literally put it on their phones on where the locations were.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we have people from all over because of a bathroom. I thought that was so unthought of. I, I didn't realize it was gonna be the impact that it had.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. And, and those, those people that are already here as we look forward or, um, for those kind of satellite developments, like a hotel or like restaurants, for the bulk of those people coming into our area, right, in that one oh one, one oh two area. Being able to stop, get out and stretch your legs before you hit the one oh one loop, if that's your next step in order to be able to do that. I know that there was conversations a few years ago about making it, um, EV friendly, to be able to do that whole lot, being able to have those potential of charging stations. Um, make them, make them, I'm not, I'm only saying this jokingly, but make them the slow ones so that they have to stay longer and spend more money. But I know they won't want that. But just, just those ideas around, um, it's not just a place to stop and do this one thing. You're, you're creating an area for, for people to stop and be able to do multiple things. Or to in their head say, oh, I gotta, I gotta check that out next time, things like that. And the, and the welcome center could be part of that. It could be the starting engagement at the, at the first exit, if that's where it, it moves forward. But what, what that looks like could be really beneficial.
The Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization has been spending money right now to actually look at the possibilities of the development of the EV loop. But I have not heard anybody say anything about bringing in the slow charging ones. That's a pretty good.
I know, it was a joke, sort of.
It was a good one though. It made sense. It made perfect sense. If you're gonna do it, why not make it economic development?
Right. It's part of our plan. Why are these so slow? It's on purpose. We'll have a sign above it.
Okay, anything else for Jennifer? Jennifer, anything else for us?
Nope, I'm good. Just a big thank you for being available, letting me pick your brains, helping, helping us move forward. It, it just really is a great partnership and I appreciate it.
Thank you much. Have a great day.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Commissioners, do you have any commissioner discussion?
I don't think I do.
Then I will entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Okay.
So approved. Now, all in favor of signifying by saying aye?
Aye.
Have a great day. See you tomorrow.
Take care.